I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the March 31st Minnehaha County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And if you needed a listening device, Robert is in the back row. He could help you with that. That will go on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission minutes from March 24, 2015, and the joint meeting for March 24, 2015. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the minutes for both meetings.
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any changes or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $524,211.08.
Pay the bills.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Today's bills include $170,000 of E-911 funds going to Metro Communications.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel actions and consider routine actions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any comments or questions for HR? Saying none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number six is application for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is notice for Ashrama Temple Number 97 Daughters of the Nile of intent to conduct a fundraising raffle in support of the Shriners Hospital for Children. Item number B is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for enhanced ballistic vests for Minnehaha County Sheriff's Department. And I don't see anybody here to speak on that. I would like authorization. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the auditor to publish. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Barth, DPNO Number 52570, for the amount of $658.50. Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This DPNO is submitted. The applicant is trying to prepare a home for sale. And during the process of looking at it, there was found a $658.50 lien noted against the property. The lien is recorded in the name of the ex-husband of the applicant. And it was for public service, public defender services on behalf of the ex-husband. The original amount to this lien was $3,158.50. And the ex-husband has made significant payments, bringing it down to $658. Basically, those are the main facts. I think that the fact the ex-husband has been making these payments certainly is very commendable. And the fact that the owner of the home is trying to prepare it for sale, had no responsibility for that is also significant. And I don't know if the applicant is here. It appears not. But I'm, I plan to make a motion to approve this transaction and release the applicant from the $658 debt. I think we all know that these liens come in based on services received from the county, and they're not gratis. And when a person does come up with a real estate transaction or a personal lawsuit claim, we do want our money back because we have to give it to somebody else. So anyway, that's my motion is to approve this application.
I have a motion to approve DPNO Number 52570 for $658.50, removing it from the applicant and leaving the amount on the ex-husband.
That's correct.
And, excuse me, removing it from the property and leaving it on the ex-husband. I have a motion. Is there a second? And we'll see if the applicant is here. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is the applicant here that would like to speak on this? Is he none? Okay, comments from the commission? Commissioner Benega?
Just, the individual who's making the payments frankly has done an excellent job in trying to restore their life back to normal. Her ex-husband is a ward of the state currently, unfortunately. And I think that if everyone would make the efforts that she has tried to make, we would be collecting significant amount of money since we have well over $50 million in lien holdings. And I'm appreciative of her attitude to try to do what she can to make this thing happen, so I'll support it.
Any other comments? Well, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other comments? Otherwise, I would look for all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next is opportunity for public comment. This is a time when you can speak to the commission about anything that is not on the agenda. That would be you, Nick. Good morning.
Commissioners, good morning. Nick Fosheim, Minnehaha County Economic Development Association. Hey, I wanted to stop by this morning and share some good news with you that we received last week. There's a group called the Fourth Economy, which is a consulting firm that works in the economic development field. They publish a list of rankings of counties every year. And this year, we were fortunate to make their list of large-sized counties in the nation. Minnehaha County ranks number three as one of the top counties in the country. They're looking at five areas, which include investment, talent, sustainability, place, and diversity, because they believe that those are the foundation for future economic success. It goes on to cite that they also look at wage and employment growth, education levels, drive times, home values, minority business ownership, alternative measures of entrepreneurship, and population density. So, and they also say Minnehaha County boasts a quality of life which many counties of its size envy. So, wanted to stop by and share that with you. And also, Minnehaha County ranks as the highest of any Midwestern county in the country. We're also joined on the top 10 list by Lancaster County, Nebraska, which is home to Lincoln, and Stearns County, Minnesota, which is home to St. Cloud. So, before I go, I just wanted to present a certificate, which I think would look way better here at the county office than it would in my office.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, you know, the work that we do here maybe doesn't always be perceived as glamorous or grab headlines, and sometimes it does grab headlines. But it is important work, and it does make a difference, and it results in achievements like this. So, the certificate says, "The FEC Index, through examining both statistical and qualitative factors at the county level within the five areas of investment, talent, sustainability, place, and diversity, recognizes this county for performing amongst the top counties in the United States with a population between 150,000 and 500,000 people." Congratulations. I'll leave this with you.
Thank you. You know, stuff like that doesn't happen with just five people. That helped by, that just happens by the efforts of many, many, many people in Minnehaha County and different programs in the city of Sioux Falls that have worked towards, to bring us to this point. So, thank you for all those involved. It's not just a Minnehaha County award. It is to all the citizens of our county and for what they've done for us. So, thank you. Thank you for sharing, Nick. We'll go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a presentation of the final report of the Minnehaha County Election Review Committee, Bruce Danielson. Good morning, Bruce.
Good morning. I'm Bruce Danielson. I was selected to be the chairman of the Minnehaha County Election Review Committee, and I've been asked today to come and present our report to you. And then, but I'd like to have a few words first before we get into any discussion. Democracies die behind closed doors. In the aftermath of the November 2014 election, this commission, our county auditor, plus the newly-elected Secretary of State, selected seven other fellow citizens to examine the processes used to issue, count, and then report election results. We, the members of the Minnehaha County Election Review Committee, are here to present our report for your examination and approval. After our December organizational meeting, we held five public hearings in this chamber to lay the groundwork for this report. These hearings, like your commission meetings, were recorded for public viewing. The public was also invited to participate at every step, and several voters did attend to present testimony. Each of our meetings centered on different parts of the process so we could discover what might have led to the problems experienced over the last several elections. And we submit this report covering these requested topics: timeliness of the vote, total release, performance of the new ballot tabulating equipment, absentee ballot issuance, and election processes in general. I personally would like to thank members of the committee for their ability to make my work as chairman so much easier. And thank you all for appointing these individuals. There was Joel Ernst, Deborah Ellipsen, Lori Hogstedt, Julie Pearson, the Pennington County Auditor, Sue Roust, our former county auditor, and Kia Warren, the Deputy Secretary of State for Election Services. The committee's depth of process knowledge, law, and their personal interest in finding answers took us to many surprising discussion areas. We would also like to thank Robert Wilson, Assistant County Commission Administrative Officer, who served as our support staff. He was able to bring to our meetings the people, resources, and needed, that were needed to compile this report. We were not asked to place blame on any person or persons, but to insist in helping to find solutions to the problems we identified. We found both system weaknesses and strengths during our meetings. The willingness to share information by everybody involved was evident throughout. It was interesting to see and experience the surprised looks combined with the note-taking as we moved through the agendas. I, for one, learned a great deal from these freewheeling discussions. Each of us will be interested in watching the implementation of our findings. We also learned through the process many things not included in your initial instructions. These may not be part of our final report, but we can be assured our county auditor and his staff will be sharing them and likely be keeping them in mind as they move forward. A goal of our proceedings was to open the election process for smoother elections. The many federal and state law changes, combined with the use of more technology made necessary by the Help America Vote Act, brought about a perfect storm of problems our systems were never designed to handle. Moments ago, I quoted Judge Damon Keith's statement, "Democracies die behind closed doors." I use this quote because our fellow citizens have become skeptical of the very process used to elect our leaders. We Americans cherish our right to vote and want our votes to count. When decisions surrounding this right and processes used or implemented out of public view, they're built skepticism leading to apathy. We hopefully have assisted in opening the system to the public so they can feel secure their votes are counted as intended. Thank you again for allowing us to help in this process. I just, we're free to take any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Danielson on the report? Commissioner Barth?
Bruce, it appears that many, if not all, of the problems we had with absentee ballots was because of the correction of the database that happened not in Minnehaha County but elsewhere. And, you know, obviously occasionally there might be a human error, but, you know, the database is so important towards getting people in the right district, in the right precinct, et cetera. How bad was it, the database?
I was astounded by how bad it was. The issues that we ran into, I started to discover things before the election, and one of the things that I decided when, when we went to this process of having these meetings was to go in and actually look at how bad the data was. I'd already discovered a series of problems, and in our meetings, we highlighted that the process prior to the election, the general election, from moving from the county's AS400 system to the state's database system managed out of peer, we found the state's database programmers were able to change data without the approval of our local county auditor. There weren't any processes set in place to allow our county auditor, who is charged by law with making sure that that voting data is correct. We allowed outside contractors, both a system called the Melissa Database System and the Total Vote System, to be able to go in and modify voting records. So, we had the north-south issues, east-west issues. We had people, because of this, got moved into something called a street master, which put them on South Kiwanis versus North Kiwanis, and moved them from one district to another district. We had the situation in the city election where, where we found people were getting the wrong ballots due to the not being part of the central district when they were actually part of the central district. And it's by having these blocks in town moved from one district to another district, these people weren't given their right to vote for who they were supposed to be able to vote for. And so, that caused a lot of publicity issues for our county auditor and for the auditor staff. And we were able to go back in and actually highlight this, and we had the state's database programmer up here at this very podium, trying to explain how things were done and why things were done. And we hope that the process we went through continues the more open dialogue with the state's programmers. To maintain, their job is only to maintain the database, not to change the data. The responsibility for changing the data is right below us in the county auditor's office. And we want to make sure that that is a much stronger process. And so, we've asked to have certain things done, such as a more easy process for checking changes and okaying changes. Some things we couldn't put into the report because we weren't charged with putting it in the report, but I know that the county auditors and are, were very interested in our process and want this followed through.
Any other questions, Commissioner Barth?
So, Bruce, you know, I guess in some degree, we're fortunate that most of the elections were not very close, because obviously, you know, 20 votes is not going to change our US Senate election or whatever. But how can we be, what is going to happen that we can be sure that outside contractors, not even state employees, won't be fiddling with our voter list?
I've actually personally made some suggestions to our county auditor to, that there needs to be some kind of a consistent backup process and verification process, something that needs to be designed to make sure that if, if a county auditor in Sioux Falls or in Gann Valley makes a change in the database, that it's the change they wanted. And they can verify that it always stays that way until that county auditor makes that change. Because as it was stressed by, by the two county auditors, the former county auditor, Sue Roust, and Julie Pearson from Pennington County, they really stressed that that is their job, is to make sure that that data is correct as they know it to be correct, and nobody's allowed to change it until they change it. And so, it doesn't, we can't use some kind of a postal service sorting to verify somebody's address, because that's not the law. The law says, as I understand it, when somebody signs their voter registration card and says, "This is my address," that's the address that's supposed to stay on there until they work it out with the county auditor that they have moved. And it doesn't matter if, if the computer program run by some company somewhere wants to change it. They cannot change it. And that needs to be solidified, if not through a verification process run out of our individual county offices, it needs to be solidified in the state election rules, that we do not change that. We have to make sure technology does not override the law.
Commissioner Kelly?
Bruce, I guess I still don't understand, who, who has the authority to make these changes? Is Secretary of State, is she the ultimate authority on voting registration? Does this commission have to do something? Does the legislature have to do something?
I think it's going to have to probably, my feelings at this point, are recommendations need to be made to the, to the state board of elections, and Sue Roust and a few of the individuals who are more expert on that side of things probably would be better to answer the question. But it needs to be worked with Secretary of State Krebs. It needs to, and with this commission. You people put us here to make these suggestions. We'll work with whatever is the right, correct process to do it. I'm, we're still learning. I'm learning. I'm new to this side of how these things work, so.
Are you aware of Secretary Krebs' or Auditor Krebs' is, is doing anything in this at this point, or is there an action that we need to take on the commission level?
That would be, I, personally, I would ask you to make a recommendation and to follow through on our recommendations that we have put in here.
Okay.
And then, then we work that through the board of elections. I understand that's part of the process. And, and with the county auditors, we had 21 county auditors who also submitted statements to our committee, saying that they were also having problems, and they were trying to figure out where the problems were coming from. And I think in the work that we did as a group, we got to the bottom of a lot of those problems when it came to the Total Vote System, where they were, these county auditors were each having individual problems, and they spent a lot of money and a lot of time putting things together only to have it changed because the information got washed through the Melissa system. So, we, we would like to have the county commission accept this report and help us move it forward and go through the processes of correcting all of these different issues, and using the information that we've gained in our hearings to also solidify the other changes that are needed that were outside of the purview of our, exact purview of our group.
We had seven volunteers, which Bruce mentioned, and I'd like to thank each one of them. They committed time to six meetings, and I don't think they were short meetings. I think they were long and involved meetings, and it was all volunteer time, and I'd like to thank you sincerely for putting that effort in and coming back. They've brought us 13 recommendations for the commission and the auditor's office to review and to work through how we can solve some of those issues that have been brought forward. Are there any other comments or questions? Commissioner Benega?
Well, I just have a couple of comments. And Bruce, thank you for your report, and I'm sure that we will accept it and move forward. Have you put together any kind of a, quote, budget for the equipment concerns that were made in reference to like the ballot scanners and those kinds of things that I think could potentially be coming out of the, is it the HAVA funds, which obviously the state also controls in a way? The other issue that I'm a little unclear about, that you made comment about in your report, are the issue of space needs.
Yes.
How has that changed from prior years? Can you give me an example of what we need to do and how much more space we need to access so that frankly, there's enough room to do the job that they are required to do?
Well, in the, in the elections that I've been involved in over the last several years, it's always been kind of a tight issue working downstairs in the two rooms essentially that were set aside downstairs. And in this process, we put, we got essentially a map of the building so that everybody could understand how everything flowed. And you could see where there were places where, where we, it was cross-traffic, and it was kind of hard to keep control of the situation to make sure that, that the auditor's office, their statutory requirements were met, and the openness of the process so people could watch the issue, you know, the election going on and our tabulating. We discovered we needed more, we need more of the resolution committees, because the new machines were theoretically faster, and they did a great job finding all the little tick marks and all the little minute issues, but we ran into issues where all of these ballots needed to be looked at. Took five minutes apiece. We discussed this back in November when I was here. So, we also found out we were, the machines were set up incorrectly with the help of ES&amp;S, the supplier of the equipment. So, we didn't understand, the auditor's office didn't understand all of the different requirements and all the different things that were done, because ES&amp;S, I believe personally, oversold the equipment and left us with too few resolution boards. In the old days, you used to have one resolution board per machine because you could keep up with the machines in that process, and we had four machines, so we had four resolution boards. Well, now, we had two resolution boards to start the last election off, and we ended up having to go to four, and we could have used 12. But, you know, these are issues that we found out in this whole process. The, what we need to do is have room for those resolution boards. And the important thing for us to be able to do as a resolution board member is sit by that machine so that we can be the judge of what's going on on that machine. If we see something wrong, we should be able to stop the machine. If we're in another room where we can't see the machines working, then we can't stop the process and make them redo it. And that's very important. So, we've made some suggestions in this process, and Julie Pearson actually hit on an idea of being able to actually use the hallway in front of those rooms that we normally work in. And we look at how to change the flow of the election using those rooms, and then repurposing that, that bigger room that we use. And I'm not sure what each one of these rooms is called anymore, but the tabulators need to be moved into the, into the larger room, we feel, so that we have a better control of the process. And then feed from the hallway into the small room into the larger room so that we can keep, you know, track of everything. Everybody's there watching the process, and we're then actually in a more open situation so everybody has a chance to see what's going on. That, I hope answered part of your question. That, and that, in a sense, isn't going to be adding a significant cost, if anything, to the election night. The other side of it would be the cost of another tabulator. And I'm not into the county budgeting, and we didn't really get into exactly how all of that's handled, but we have a situation where there's HAVA funds, we're told, available to buy another machine, and it is technology. And as, as the county's IT director stated, you know, "Technology is going to fail." And we need a backup machine. What we discovered on election night, and we still haven't gotten our answers on this question, is why did that machine fail for 45 minutes on election night? We wanted to know that. We still haven't found out why. But an interesting side to this whole process that we went through, we actually went down and ran test ballots in our first full public meeting. We ran the test ballots, and then we ran ballots that had been rejected in the election. And we were able to come back in and have the process work perfectly with the test ballots. As soon as we put in and loaded the machine with the ballots that had a problem, the machine crashed, and it crashed twice. And so, we weren't- And so we weren't able to actually find out what was going on with that machine, and the ES and S representatives were struggling to get it started. And we had to go to the backup machine and get it to finish our process. And that was a very important lesson to the whole process. Because if ES and S is standing here, and they're the experts, and they can't make the machines run for us, they can't get it back up and running in a timely fashion, it gave us an indication that there was something going on, that we need to have some better process for making sure we have enough tabulators to get the job done. If we're gonna, if we're gonna go 100% towards mechanization of the counting process, then we better have enough equipment here so that we can do the job, not quickly. Because I'm not, I'm not a big fan of getting it done fast. I'm here to say, and our group was here to say, we want it done properly. And so if a machine crashes, and we're stuck with one machine to finish out the process on election night, it might be election week before the whole process is done. Because at 9:15 in the morning, that Wednesday morning, I marked the last ballot as, as a member of the resolution committee because of those issues that we were running into with those machines. And if the people demand it to be done faster, then we're gonna need more machines to make sure that they can get it done in time.
Commissioner Benega?
I have one more comment, and then I'll be quiet. In this whole process, those of us who are elected officials are used to taking cheap shots. I mean, that's just part of the job. But I was really concerned about the fact that those employees who worked frankly all night long and worked till 9:15 in the morning also took some cheap shots, not from, we'll just say from the general public and the, and the media. And I just wanna say that nowhere in this report does it question the efforts and the integrity and all the things that those employees did till whatever time to get those ballots done correctly and not in a hurry. And I think we owe those employees somewhat of an apology for having to live with that kind of environment. And frankly, if other people get their exercise by jumping to conclusions, that's their problem. But if they wanna do that, they oughta do it in the proper form. So again, I would like to say to those individuals who were here till 9:15 the next day, who worked incredible hours to make this thing happen on a system that really had nothing to do with their ability to do the job right. I apologize for that, and I can't control it, but frankly, I don't think I have to listen to it either.
Thank you, Commissioner Benega, for your comments. I would like to give an opportunity for the rest of the seven committee members, if they had anything they wanted to add to what Bruce has told us. Is there anybody that would like to add anything? Okay.
Could I add one more thing? Because having worked a few elections, both downstairs and around the state of South Dakota for various different things I've done for the last 49 years in South Dakota elections, I've always been impressed with every auditor's office I've ever worked with. Their staffs, they, they, it's unbelievable what they go through. And each election I go through, I'm more impressed every time. I have, I've had the pleasure now of, of having some close associations with the Minnehaha County auditor staff, and past and present. And, and I'm very pleased to say I would trust them with what we need to get accomplished down here. I believe, this is me personally, believe that, that things were done outside of this building that our county did not have any control over. And it got blamed on the people in this building. And I don't feel that's fair to the people that work hard downstairs, doing job that with the changes we've, we've gone through. Since 2010, we've, we've actually changed auditor staff, we've changed secretary of states, we've changed the database programmers, we've changed the database process. We've, we've, we've gone through and now changed the, the equipment that tabulates. So there are all of these changes that happened all at once. And there is election rules, we found out that, that there is possible changes in how they even structure data and the data conversion processes. And there's all these things that happened outside of this building that got blamed on what was happening in this building. And I personally feel that was wrong. And I, and if there was a way I could apologize to these people on behalf of everybody, I would. Because they tried their level best with what they had available to work with.
Thank you, Bruce. Apology is greatly appreciated, I'm sure to all staff. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I wanna go back to the DAS 850. You have indicated that you think we probably should acquire a third one. If we've had so much trouble the first two, I struggle with wondering why we want another one. Weren't the, weren't the machines set up that two should be sufficient for our county and that their procedures and their lack of, of support for us led to the problems we had? Do they have someone on site? One of their people?
They did, they did not have a technical support person here that night.
Did we, do we have access by phone, or?
They were able to link up via the internet to the machine. My understanding is that's what was going on during that 45 minutes.
But in your opinion, and I know we'll have discussions with, with Auditor Litz, but in your opinion, should the two machines, if they were working correctly, do the job? Or do we need to have a third one to, to make the system go smoother?
I personally feel that if, that we, we need to get the third machine. And that was a finding that we had in our, in our report, that they need to, you need to consider with Auditor Litz to have a third machine. And the, because if we come in and we do our job through the election of getting the ballots tabulated, and both machines fail, we've already proven both machines are fallible. We have, then we're going back to saying now, does the resolution board have to be convened so that we could have to hand count all of these ballots? And that's what we would be looking at. You know, at what point do we get these machines put back online so that the process can continue?
Any other questions or comments? This was a presentation. Commissioner Burr?
Madam Chair, and I appreciate the work of the committee, and I, I would, you know, if they wanted to come up, I think that's a good idea. I think it'd be, the auditor may wanna come up. But a couple of things in reading this report, and there's a lot of info in there, but Pennington County used 12 resolution boards. We used three and then four. Interestingly, these other counties pay their resolution board members, and so Bruce working till 9:00 AM, you know, how many hours did you put in, Bruce? 14?
I was, I was in the, I was hanging around the auditor's office doing in and out whatever needed to be done for 23 hours that day.
You know, and there are other issues, I think, also with, if you read the further info, you know, recommendations to get a folding thing, there were issues with over ballots, over voting, or whatever you call it. And they all need to be resolved, and I think that this report is very constructive towards getting it resolved.
Thank you, Commissioner Burr. I think Sue Rouse would like to speak, am I correct? Sue's standing back behind, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Just a couple of things to clarify. There was a staff member from Sea Change, which is the company that does the programming and printing of the ballots here on election night. So it was not the case that there was not any support here. I, I understand that the person was on the phone talking with ES and S, but there was a representative here that night. The, you alluded to that overvote question. That's a very simple fix. That's one of the things we found when we talked about the machines being set wrong. It was just an option. You don't set them to stop every time there's an overvote. For instance, a person had voted for two people. Because by state law, we can't change anything anyway. If somebody has an overvote, that vote on that race is, is discounted and the rest of the ballot is counted. And so just by making that one switch, it's not a problem, it's not a matter that the machine was wrong. It was just a switch was, was flipped, and that's going to help a lot. Before these new machines were purchased, you had four of the previous generation of them. I was surprised when I heard that we were going with only two of these. It just, and, you know, if there isn't, the inevitable problem occurs, it, and you're down to one machine, that just isn't enough. I strongly agree with the committee recommendation and with the auditor's conclusion that we should have a third one. And it's my understanding that Minnehaha County has ample HAVA funds to pay for it. Another thing that would be useful for relates to another one of our recommendations, was that the auditor consider beginning to, to run, process the absentee ballots before polls close. By law, they can open the absentee ballots, they can run them through a scanner as long as no results are printed out. And we've always done it right up to the point of having them ready to run through the scanner. But if you had a third scanner, it would make it that much easier to devote that third scanner just to working with the absentee ballots, and then you wouldn't spend half the night, when everybody's already exhausted, trying to process the absentee ballots. So I think there's a lot of benefits to getting that third scanner. There has been some comment about Total Vote, which is the new election management system that was installed by our, our previous secretary of state. And one of the big benefits, I believe, of this committee was the fact that we had the state election director on it. Now, we have a new secretary of state. She has brought back staff that was in the office prior to the previous secretary's tenure. But what, what the issue is, is that the previous secretary had installed this whole new system, and so we've got staff that have been there before, are very experienced, but came in knowing basically nothing about the total vote system. This is the system now that holds all our state voter registration data that is used to design ballots, that it is, is used for reporting and so on. And so I think it was a tremendous benefit to have a representative from the secretary of state's office here to hear about the issues and to hear the report that Commissioner Litz compiled of those 21 auditors who had their own comments about total vote. I know that the secretary of state has had, I believe, at least two meetings. Have you had the second one with the auditors yet? And the secretary of state, that one's coming up. They have had, they had one meeting right away, I think in January, and now they've got another one scheduled to focus on training and the total vote system. So I think that this process that you initiated here will help auditors statewide because it will help the secretary of state and her staff get familiar and be able to really dig in and finally correct the problems that we have had with, with total vote. One other comment, Gerald, Commissioner Benega, I think you asked about the-
I'm Gerald, too.
Sorry about that. Ask about the comment we had on space. We are very concerned about space. And obviously, one of the things we were told was gonna be happening is happening right now. We're losing this room out here that has been used for processing of absentee ballots on election day. I look at that, and I wonder where absentee ballots are going to be processed the next general election. When I started as auditor, there was no extra space in this building. We had to process ballots across the street, upstairs, in the extension building. And that involved taking absentee ballots out of a secure space in this building, taking them on carts across the street in who knows what weather, processing them there, bringing them back here to count. And that's what I see in your future. I, we felt that the commission really needs to think about the space needs for elections and how you're gonna handle elections. The, the idea of using that north hallway on first floor, I think is a great one, and I'm, I'm sorry that I never thought of it, because when Julie suggested it, I thought, oh my gosh, that makes so much sense. That doesn't deal with the problem of absentee ballots. In a general election, we've used all of this room and all of the room that was there and been so crowded, people could barely breathe, much less move around. If we're going to improve our speed of counting absentees, even start to count them before the polls close, we've gotta have adequate space to do that counting. I don't know where it's gonna be, but I hope that long before November of 2016, you're talking with Auditor Litz about how you're gonna handle absentees now that he's lost one more of the critical spaces that he had. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Any questions for Sue? Any other comments from the committee? Okay. Thank you for your report. And like I said, we will be reviewing and seeing, working with the auditor to see where we can go from here. So, thank you very much. We will move on to item number 11, which is a consider a motion to appoint a candidate to the Minnehaha County Planning Commission for a four-year term. This was deferred from March 24, 2015. Scott Anderson?
Yes.
We have been through all interviews last week and deferred one week to have Commissioner Benega back here. And he reviewed the tapes from last week and got up to speed with where we are. So, did you have any?
No, I just was gonna give a recap, and I think you just did that for me. Once again, Scott Anderson, county planning. We had four candidates, you had a good discussion last week, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. I provided the background information on each candidate for you, which I think you have, have. So, any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Are there any questions for Scott? I'm seeing none. I look for a motion.
Madam Chair, you know, obviously, there were four original applicants, and we sort of devolved into two suggestions last week, and I think that either one of them would do a great job. I think, you know, we had two of them attend our last planning commission meeting, those same two. We have one of them here right now, the other one was here earlier today. I think having someone from the east part of our county to replace a, a board member from the east part of the county is, is important. And it's important to have people that, that have a foot in the rural area as opposed to living in our growing metropolis here. And I think either of them will do a fine job. My concern is that having a, an operator on the board may have the appearance, I don't think it would affect the vote, but it might have the appearance of slanting our planning commission. And that's why I support Julie Umstead as our candidate for that. And I would make a motion to appoint her. And I'll look for a second. That said, I think we will be fine either way.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'm gonna second it, just for discussion.
I have a motion and a second to appoint Ms. Umdal. Comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I, I think the difficulty in this thing, and it's just a necessity of our job, is indicating together three that they weren't qualified. And, and that isn't the case.
That isn't the case.
It kind of is a no vote. I mean, if there's a no, if somebody would support, for instance, Mr. Odie, does he vote no on Julie now that there's a motion on the table? I don't know what the answer to that is, but I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with how we do it, and yet I don't believe there's any other way we can do this except through a motion. I don't know if anybody else got any comments on that, or?
Any comments? And a motion, a second on the table? Commissioner Burr?
You know, we have appointed other people to, other boards without this much fanfare. But, you know, I don't know that we've really interviewed them deeply enough, or in some cases, we've appointed people to some of our panels and boards that really were just a stranger to us. We don't really know, you know, as much about them as we, as we should. I think specifically about our public defender and public advocate advisory boards. I mean, those are such important jobs, yet we seem to just slide people into those without any, any fanfare. And I, you know, this is, is difficult, but it was difficult to pick another commissioner for this job, too. They pay us the big bucks to- They pay us the big bucks to make the call.
Any other comments? I will continue to support Mr. Odie. He's had experience on the Red Rock Corridor and on the Envision 2036.
2035.
2035. And so I will continue to support my original intent. Any other comments?
Commissioner, I would echo those comments, and I agree. I mean, and I'm the fortunate recipient of this commission's determination to appoint me to this position. And these are difficult decisions. The definite silver lining I see in this is that it's very gratifying to have really good people come forward and be willing to serve. And, you know, hopefully, it will be a great benefit to the commission and to the county in years ahead that even folks who weren't chosen to fill this position, my position, or to fill the position here that we're filling, that they will find many, many other opportunities to come forward and serve in the future. But I would echo the statements that I made at our last meeting that I would support Mr. Odie for this position. I think both candidates made clear that they're both involved in agriculture and in production. Ms. Umstead's just as involved in a different county. But Mr. Odie has been a lifelong resident of this county, knows a lot of people in the county, and I've personally known him for a long time and am not aware of anybody that has issues with him. And I would just say that I think that his experience, both growing up here, working here, and the evidence of his previous involvement in planning issues would hold him in good stead in this position.
Any other comments? Anything about Commissioner Benega?
Well, I obviously wasn't here last week, and thanks for delaying this. So, I have an opportunity. The issue is, is that I did have a chance to look at last week's video, and we talk about needs of the county. One of them is to get better equipment so I can hear and see what the video looked The other issue is, is I did have an opportunity to talk to both of the candidates. In fact, I talked to Mr. Odie last night, or yesterday afternoon, and I finally finished talking, so to speak, with Julie. She sent me a text at 11:30 last night, so she was up late like the rest of us. It's a difficult decision, and this is the first time I can remember we've had four people apply for a position that was an advisory board position, which is wonderful. I think that's exactly what we like to have. And frankly, the little bit of fanfare, whatever we're talking about, is nice to have because in most cases, we didn't have choices. It was the one person who had applied in lots of different occasions, and that was the person that we chose for obvious reasons. In this particular case, I didn't come to a solid decision until, I guess, early this morning. It went through a checklist, and I'm going to support Mr. Odie also. And the reason for it is his involvement with the Red Rock Corridor issues and the Envision 235, or 25, or whatever the number, is because frankly, it showed an interest before even was nominated, so to speak, or filled out the application. And I do think the application, if you look through both Doug and Julie's application, they both talk a lot about their dedication to community service and to agriculture and some other stuff. It's just that Doug has one more checkmark, if you will, in my list of things that are important. So, that's the direction that I'm going to go.
Commissioner Burr.
With your permission, Madam Chair, I'd withdraw my motion to nominate Julie Umstead. And if Dick will withdraw his second-
I'll draw the second.
...to nominate Mr. Odie.
Okay. I have a motion and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to nominate, to withdraw, to withdrew the first motion, but to nominate Mr. Odie for the Planning Commission for your term. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Welcome aboard, Mr. Odie. Item number 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign the following agreements between Minnehaha County and the Volunteers of America. Ken McFarland.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to be dating myself a little bit here. About 20 years ago, Minnehaha County, in conjunction with 13 other counties in the southeast region of the state, formed a detention collaborative to fulfill each county's responsibilities as it related to implementing the Office of Juvenile Justice Delinquency and Prevention Act way back when. So, Minnehaha County has really been on the forefront of looking at innovative ways to have juvenile detention reform for quite a few years. And that partnership was memorialized in a, in a number of agreements, including a joint powers agreement between Minnehaha County and the other 13 counties, and some services agreement and a collaboration agreement with our non-secure detention partner, Volunteers of America. Back then, they were known as Turning Point and that. So, we've all gone through a lot of changes back then, since then. Back in April of 1995, I'd already worked for the county for 17 years, and I was convinced that I would not be around when those 20-year agreements started to expire. And lo and behold, here we are. Our agreements with our partner counties, the joint co-op, the joint powers agreement actually expires in June of 2015. And we're doing some work with those folks in order to make sure that we can continue our efforts until we come up to a conclusion on how we best meet our facility requirements for how we've changed the juvenile justice system for the future and that. But our agreements with VOA for both the lease of the county facility at 908 Northwest Avenue, and we have a, through the collaboration agreement, we've held title to the facility on West 51st Street for these 20 years. Those agreements all expire in April of 2015. And so what we have today for you are the agreements that we've, we've prepared that would extend our relationship with VOA for our non-secure detention services, use of our facilities, and transferring the ownership of the West 51st Street facility back to VOA as contemplated in the original collaboration agreement. So what you have before you are those three documents that would do that. One is the acknowledgement and the compliance with the termination of the original collaboration agreement with VOA. We have a closing scheduled to transfer the West 51st Street facility back to VOA on April 13th. So, that work has started to be done in order to fulfill the terms of that agreement. Some of you may ask, I mean, what, how did we get that building in the first place and why did we get it? This is, under the terms of the original agreement, we got it because that was going to be our, our facility for our excess beds so that none of our partner counties would ever be turned away whenever they wanted to come and get a bed with our detention collaborative. That was our guarantee to the partner counties. If you sign under this, you won't be turned away. You'll have a bed. And so that's why we got the 51st Street facility in the first place. We had, we assumed title on that building by paying off some outstanding debt service and some street assessments that VOA had on the property. They have fulfilled their responsibilities on that building. We have fulfilled ours, and that's why we will contemplate the closing on April 13th. And that's what this first agreement acknowledges. It wraps up that collaboration agreement. The other two agreements are specifically related to our use of the 32 non-secure beds at the 908 Northwest Facility. And again, what these agreements would do is to extend our relationship with VOA in that facility for another two years. Both the lease and both the services agreement to operate those beds and to operate programs that we've developed through the course of the partnership. What we're going to ask of you today is that you defer these action items for one more week. And the collaboration agreement, we ran into a little issue where we had with the West 51st Street facility, one thing that came up this morning that we will have to resolve related to a repair on the building, the roof repair. And it's our desire that we wrap all these agreements at the same time. And so what we're going to ask is that you defer these, all of these agreements for one more week until April 7th to give us an opportunity to take advantage and fix that roof issue out on the 51st Street facility before we proceed with signing agreements. I've been fortunate to work with Pat Connect. He's the attorney representing VOA in this process. I've had a long relationship with John Hart, and that as far as the management of those facilities. And I think we're all in agreement that this is the best course of action so that we can resolve these minor issues prior to the formal closing on the 13th. It's probably going to be our intent to sign the collaboration agreement. We'll do that probably at the closing scheduled for April 13th. So next week, I'll be asking for your authorization to have the chairman do that at that closing on April 13th. With that, I don't know, Pat, if you have anything you'd like to say, and that, or John. But again, you know, it was our intent to have, wrap this up today, but a couple of issues came up this morning, and we just want to get them resolved before the final, final closing.
Thanks, Ken. As Ken indicated, I'm Pat Connect with the Voice Law Firm, and I represent VOA. And I don't really have anything to present this morning, but if you have any questions for me or John Hart, I'm sure either of, either of us would be happy to speak.
Any questions? I don't think so. Thank you, Mr. Connect.
Thank you.
I would look for a motion to defer for one week.
That's my motion, and I'm happy to make it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. Ken, this isn't your way of getting job security for another week, is it?
It just might be.
I'm kidding.
You have a motion and a second to defer item number 12 for one week. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is a briefing from the Minnehaha County Highway Department on the condition and replacement of rural addressing signs. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. This briefing is informational only, just to provide an update to the county commission on the status of our rural addressing signage. About a year ago, the highway department and probably the commission office and maybe some of you individual commissioners started to hear some rumblings about the county about the fading of rural addressing signs. For seven years, I think, these signs were installed, and they're supposed to last anywhere from 10 to 15 years, depending on the actual sign. And they started fading much sooner than they're supposed to last. And so the highway department contacted 3M, which is the manufacturer of the film that sits on, on the piece of aluminum, and found out that there was about six months left for the warranty. And so we, we started receiving complaints just in the nick of time, and we started working with 3M on the warranty issue. And we were successful in negotiating a full replacement of the material and the decals that, that are on the face of the sign. And so if we were to go purchase one of these rural addressing signs with the film and the decals for the numbers, it would be about a $10 cost for the county. We have about 6,800 signs out in the county for rural addressing, and 3M is stepping up to the, to the plate, and they're replacing every single one of those signs. The material only, and the highway department sign crew will have to go out and replace, replace, do the installation of those signs. So to date, we have received approximately 2,800 of the 6,800 signs. We have done some replacements, a little bit less than 200 of the signs have been replaced right now. Right now, our sign crew is, is pretty busy. And so what they're doing is, if we receive a call or a complaint from either fire chief or from a resident, we go and replace that sign. And then as they, as they're able to work it into their schedule, they're going to develop a systematic, or they have developed a systematic approach where they're going to start on, on one road section and go and replace every single sign on that road section. Using this method, it's going to be the most efficient, we believe, but we're still going to be able to address anybody's immediate concerns. And so that's our plan. We think that it will likely take a year or possibly more to replace all 6,800 signs. That's a lot of signs for a two-man sign crew that has full timeline of work outside of this project to complete. So, that is our update for now. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Commissioner Burr.
D.J., what about the idea of having a couple more summertime workers that could, you know, kick this project and get her, get her done?
We don't have any funding available or budgeted for summer employees on the sign crew, but if it's something that the commission would like to make a priority, we could certainly look into that and what the cost would be to the county and how much training we would need to do in order for them to be able to install the signs. The sign installation isn't that difficult. So, it's something that we could certainly look into.
Any other questions? Commissioner Kelly.
Follow up on that. Could you come back next week with a proposal to hire a couple of part-time people for the sign crew?
Absolutely. We can develop some costs.
We can then make a decision on whether or not it's economical.
We can do that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bender.
D.J., so is there a, is there a new warranty that attaches to these new signs now?
There is a warranty associated with the signs, but because these were replaced on a warranty, we have not received any information regarding that from 3M. I would, I would assume that they, that they will still be covered under the warranty that was existing, not a new warranty starting over. And the existing warranty is, is a bit of a prorated warranty where when we initially notify or noticed that these signs were going bad, we had six months left for a full warranty. Now, that warranty period, for I think, three years, goes down to, I believe, a 50% replacement. And so we probably would still qualify for that 50% replacement for three years, but not another seven years or seven and a half years. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Was there any explanation from 3M about the fading? I mean, is there an issue that they've addressed where they don't think it will occur again?
What I was told verbally, not in writing, was that, was that this was a relatively new technology. They had estimated that the life of the sign would be so long, and that's how they based their warranty. And there was a very large group of signs that were film, a very large portion of film that was made that did not meet the specifications that they had hoped. And so that not only these signs, but a lot of other signs that they made, had the same defect. Since then, the technology has improved dramatically, and they feel that they are meeting their specifications in their manufacturing process, and they won't have this problem again.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Are these signs still blue?
They are blue.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, D.J. We'll move on to item number 14, which is liaison reports. Are there any reports today? Commissioner Kelly.
Just one from IT. The case management program that we have instituted in the public defender's office is now ready to go live on April 6th in the public advocate's office. So, the next step after that, of course, is the state's attorney's office.
And a huge thank you again to our IT department for their development of this program that we had worked on for many years under a vendor and couldn't get it done, but our own people did it. So, kudos to our wonderful IT department. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion for executive session for contracts, personnel, and legal briefing.
That's my motion.
Second? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.